At this time, I'd like to call to order the Monday, December 16th, 2024 Currituck County Board of Commissioners to order. And I guess next thing is to approve the agenda, but I do have a couple of changes I'd like to ask.
Do the invocation first.
Oh, you know what? I'm still rusty. All right. At this time, thank you. At this time, we have our invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. We have Pastor Mark Goines for New Life at Currituck to lead us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Every time I come before you, I always like to thank the commissioners and for giving us at New Life at Currituck and all the passions of the community the opportunity to serve you and our community in this way. So, thank you. Let's pray. Well, we come before you tonight, giving you thanks for all the blessings, both material and immaterial, that you have given us, lavished upon us, both individually and collectively. We thank you, Lord God, for the freedom that we have to meet together and discuss the needs of the residents of this county where we live. Lord, we thank you for the long, rich history of our county and the many advantages you've given to all of us who live here. Lord, we thank you for those before us that have a willing heart to assume the responsibility to lead and to direct the affairs and the businesses of our county, Lord God, and to serve, Lord, this way, to serve the public trust. Lord, I'm reminded that the Apostle James messaged in James that if anyone lacks wisdom, they can ask of God and He'll give it liberally. And so, Lord, we stand before you today humbly asking you for your wisdom, asking you for the spirit of unity and cooperation in dealing with the needs and the challenges of Currituck County. Lord, even as we approach the Christmas season, Lord God, we honor you as we reflect on it and pray that you would fill us all with hope and joy and love and peace. And, Lord, we pray that you would just bless us and be honored as we gather together today, Lord God, and watch over us continually and keep us. And we give you your name, the glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Goines. At this time, I'll ask Megan to read the Ethics and Awareness and Conflict of Interest.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Anyone? All right. Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda. I would like to move the Commissioner's report, the County Manager's report, and the County Attorney's report to after the consent agenda. And I would like to add under new business, under 1A, a resolution regarding Corey Ditch at Knott's Island.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next is public comment. I have no one signed up for public comment. Is there anyone? Oh, wait a minute. Wrong paper. We have Tamara Coogler signed up for public comment. Would you please come forward and give us your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Tamara Coogler, and I live at 103 Charleston Drive in Grandy. And tonight, I come before you as a tourism director with a couple of announcements. Back on December 1st, we had a door decorating contest for our county departments, and they were invited to decorate their doors, and they would be judged on those doors. And the purpose was for camaraderie, for creativity, and also for our residents coming into our county building to see something fun. So, we had six participating departments this year. We had Board of Elections, Social Services, Finance, Emergency Management and Communications, IT, and Planning and Inspections. And I have the trophies up here. And first place this year goes to Planning and Inspections with their door, "Who Did It Ran Over Grandma? Suspect Lineup." So, it's very cute. You should go see it. Our second-place winner is IT. They had a very detailed door with computer language, tech the halls, and also there's a beautiful QR code. So, if you go to the QR code, you can hear a lovely song. And third place goes to Emergency Management and Communications for their 12 Days of Dispatch. So, that one's quite creative, too. So, I'd, please, go by and see them. They're absolutely wonderful. Also, I had the pleasure of attending our NCTIA, which is our North Carolina Travel Industry Association Tourism Leadership Conference, in December, December 9th. And I'm pleased to say that Currituck County won gold for Leisure Marketing for It Never Gets Old campaign. So, we were actually not expecting that, so that was quite a surprise. We were beat out by Raleigh, so they did get platinum, but we were very pleased to get gold. And also, it was a rather Outer Banks event because Bobby Hannig, the night before, was awarded the North Carolina Legislator of the Year. So, Bobby Hannig was honored by NCTIA. And also Clark Twitty with Twitty &amp; Company received the Tourism Excellence for an Individual Award. So, we did very well. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak that didn't sign? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment, and we will move on to our public hearings. The first one is PB 2425 Sunrise on the Sound. Hugh Samuel Miller IV is requesting a preliminary plat special use permit for a 15-lot conservation subdivision located off Tolls Creek Road, Tax Map 49, Parcel 9C Crawford Township. Would anyone, anyone that wishes to speak on this agenda item needs to come forward You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you, God?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
I'll do my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. This is a request for approval of preliminary plat special use permit for a conservation subdivision. Here's an aerial photography that's also found in your staff report to orient you to the site. The site is located between Baxter Estates and Sanderson Court. The property is currently zoned, single-family residential mainland, and as you can see from this map, is also surrounded by properties that have the residential, same residential zoning. The future land use map classifies the site as G2, which is controlled growth, and this particular property is within the courthouse subarea of the land use plan. You can see here, this is a general layout of the new proposed lots here along a new proposed reedy lane that connects to Tolls Creek Road and Sanderson Road. The parcel is 17.48 acres. The proposed density of the subdivision is .86 dwelling units per acre. Per the ordinance with the SFM zoning district, the maximum density is one dwelling unit per acre. Per the land use plan, it allows a maximum of up to two dwelling units per acre. The minimum lot size in this zoning district is 25,000 square feet, and all the lots are at least 25,000 square feet, and the open space requirement is 40%. And the applicant is providing seven acres of open space, which equates to 40.05% open space. The property is proposed to be served by county water and individual septic. The site evaluations that indicate that the lots are suitable for septic are in your agenda packet. Stormwater is proposed to be handled by the two ponds here that flank the entrance along the proposed reedy lane, as well as lightline swales and roadway swales that convey the water to the stormwater ponds. They are proposing sidewalks on both sides of the street, as well as along Tolls Creek Road. The applicant's proposing street trees in accordance with the ordinance. You can see the landscaping plan here. There's also this hatched area, which is areas that are proposed in open space that will be reforested. The applicant will reforest those areas with 40 hardwood trees per acre. The areas within open space will also contain a conservation easement over the open space. And with respect to landscaping, there is some proposed streetscaping along Tolls Creek Road, as well as a buffer between the proposed lots and the existing lots to the south. And you can see here is the typical lot layout. You can see there's a 50-foot front setback, which is a requirement of the ordinance, 10-foot sides, 25-foot rear, and the applicant's proposing 30% lot coverage. Then on the right here, you can see the typical roadway section with the 50-foot right-of-way, the sidewalk just outside of that, and an easement on the lots, and then street trees also in an easement on the lots. I did include the, this chart from your staff report with respect to adequate public school facilities. I have that here. I'll let the applicant make the presentation regarding meeting that standard for issuance of the special use permit. The Currituck, Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan has several policies that may apply to this request. They're found in your agenda packet. There are these land use plan policies you can see here, as well as infrastructure and county services goals and policies that may apply to the project, transportation and environmental policies and goals, parks and rec policies and goals, as well as some general northern mainland land use policies, as well as the G2 Controlled Growth Policy and a courthouse land use policy regarding prioritizing quality development and preservation of open space. Would the board like me to go into more detail about any of these policies, or we're good with the staff report? Okay. Special use permit shall be approved on a finding that the applicant demonstrates that the proposed use is in compliance with the ordinance and will not endanger the public health or safety, will not injure the value of adjoining or butting lands, and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located, that will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans, and not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public school facilities. The Technical Review Committee for these types of applications does not provide a recommendation, but does provide review and comment. And you can see here that the TRC did review the application. The application is in conformance with the UDO, and the board may attach conditions of approval with respect to timing on lots to ensure that there are adequate public school facilities. And that's what I have prepared to present to you for the subdivision. Any questions for me at this time?
Any questions for Ms. Turner? I do have one, Ms. Turner. I've noticed that, and when you pull out of some driveways, that some of the landscaping is kind of overgrowing and creating line of sight issues up and down the corridor, and it's not any one particular place, or several places. I'll give you, the Moayok Post Office is one of the most egregious ones that I've seen. When you pull out of there, you can't hardly see. So, are we making sure that the setbacks on this landscaping along the highway is not going to grow out to where people can't see when they pull out? I mean, how do we?
We have requirements that site triangles remain clear.
Okay.
So, there is a requirement. Generally, when the property meets a major arterial like Carrot Hook Highway or Tolls Creek Road, there is a, I believe it's a 10-by-70 site triangle, as well as a 25-by-25 or 20-by-20 site triangle that should be clear.
Okay.
So, there is an ordinance provision for that.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
I was just going to make a statement.
Go ahead.
I've maintained the post office for 11 years. We cut those back twice in the winter and the summer, so it's like on the list in January.
Okay. I'm just tightening you up.
There you go. Keep me straight.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Turner. At this time, we'll let the applicant make their presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm John Morrison. I'm an attorney with Twyford Law Firm in Moayok and Elizabeth City. In addition to be very ancient, I also represent the developer, Mr. Miller, and with your permission, I would like to call him to testify.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Miller?
Give the board your name, please.
Hugh Samuel Miller IV.
With the permission of the county attorney, I will leave in the interest of time. You are a resident of Currituck County?
I am.
And how long have you been such? Long time?
It's been a while, yeah.
Okay. You're also a graduate of Penn State University, and you hold a degree in engineering. Is that correct?
Yes, mechanical.
And you have, and you're licensed in Pennsylvania and North Carolina both?
I am not. I do not carry a professional engineering license in North Carolina or Pennsylvania. I employ a professional engineer on my behalf to eliminate conflicts of interest.
Very good. All right. Now, you've developed quite a bit in Currituck County, have you not?
We've done a variety of projects, from airplane hangars to rebuilding office buildings to townhome projects, to residential subdivisions, to, we're working on many notes, and I'll put that in public record. It's probably going to be after the 1st of the year when that opens, just in case anybody asks about that anymore as well, so.
You also have businesses in Currituck County. Are you happy?
We have multiple, yes.
Okay. Now, are you familiar with Currituck County Infide Development Ordinance?
Yes, sir.
And to your knowledge, have you complied with that?
Yes.
All right. Now, when we talked, you gave me an analogy. This development is very similar to one you previously did.
Yes, sir.
What is that?
Soundwoods.
Okay. Which is where?
Adjacent to this property where the buffer was shown to show, have compliances, yards back up to each other, so everyone has privacy. We developed, designed, developed, and built that neighborhood.
All right, sir. The chairman raised a question about line of sight. Would you address that, please?
Yeah, it's Commissioner O'Neill, Chairman O'Neill. It's actually inherent in the design. I was talking with Mark about it. We're preparing DOT right-of-ways. So, when we do that, we do exactly what Ms. Turner talked about in preparing site triangles. And all the subdivisions we've done in Currituck County have had DOT roads, and they've actually all been accepted, including Soundwoods. And in doing that, we have to design in that site triangle. DOT will not accept the roadway if we prepare something that does not work for that. For instance, in Soundwoods, we had some large-growth trees on Sanderson Court, not even a sight issue. And they said, you know, this is really such a big tree with these roots. We'll take your road after you finally remove these trees. So, we went in and we removed trees that were beyond the 15-foot setback to make compliance with DOT. They are very arduous and challenging, but when they finally do it, it's, it's right. But DOT is that check and balance for that from a design or professional perspective.
All right. Now, if I understand Jenny's testimony correctly, the only potential concern was with adequate public facilities and the school. You and I discussed that as well, did we not?
We did.
All right. Can you tell the commissioners how you're going to address the issue of school?
Well, we have three major fronts on that. One, in the process we're in, in talking with Mark from Bissell Professional Group, we estimate the permits are going to take about six months to get together. Then from there, we have to actually go through TRC and all those other pieces and develop the parcel before we can even build a property. That's another six months. Then to build a house, it's probably anywhere from four to six months, but I'm assuming the first two went right perfectly, so, which they never do. We never seem to get the timing right and getting something back and making the next meeting and making everything perfect. So, long story short, we're probably 18 months from an approval for a special use permit, if everything goes great, to when we could possibly actually have the first house and make an impact. And our 15 homes with a potential of three students. And we looked at what the timing is from the county on the construction of the new school, and I think we're 10 months. So, we're conservatively longer than that.
All right. Now, you say three students. That would be for the whole subdivision?
Well, that's, the main area of focus really is the Shawboro Elementary School, and with the capacity of that. And with the new Moayok Elementary School being introduced, we're looking at 800 seats, if I'm correct, and we're looking at an impact of three additional students by this subdivision.
Can I ask a question? So, would you be opposed to a condition stating that you would wait to get the first CO, CO until the school was open, Tolls Creek Elementary? Would you be willing to agree to that condition?
If the board feels that that is important based on the magnitude of the three students, then I would, you know, we're willing to be compliant in any way that's within reason of those things. In my personal opinion, since you're asking me directly, I don't know that I would say three students is something of, you know, significance in those kind of things. If it were 30, I would probably be more, but if that's really what you all feel is the right thing to do, then I would do it. I don't, my personal professional opinion is, I don't think it's going to make any real impact at all, being three students, but.
Well, since it's already overcapacity, and we're looking at, hopefully, as you talked about, if all things go well, we'll be in in October 2025. So, just in case, you know, there are issues, three students may not be a lot, but it would be something that I would ask of any applicant in front of me.
Of course. And I'm going to leave it to your discretion in those types of things, too. And again, we're talking about, I think, committed capacity, too, not necessarily what the active current capacity is, too, as well, so, with that stuff as well.
I think the actual capacity is over.
Okay.
Yeah, the actual capacity is 101%.
Okay.
I have a question as well.
Sure.
Do you know what, what type, what size of homes you're planning to build? Do you have any ideas?
Well, you know, it really depends on what the interest is from people as well, but we're building next to a neighborhood that sells anywhere from, I would say, mid-400s to, we just recently had one close in Soundwoods for 800,000 almost. So, they're significant in, in their, their size and those pieces. Some have been custom, and one was a custom building there as well in the adjacent neighborhood. So, they're going to be very complimentary. They all touch each other. They go together with those types of things.
That's what I was wondering. Are you planning to kind of piggyback off of Sanderson in regards to size?
Yes. It was very popular. It was, I mean, properties don't stay on the market long, and so we're probably building the same size and type and finishes.
Do you intend, are you the builder, too?
We are.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't play well with others. We typically like to have our own sandbox.
What size lot in Sanderson? What size?
I'm not going to say that.
Yeah.
No.
What size, the lots in Sanderson, they're like a little bigger than half an acre, so similar size?
They're 30,000. These are 25, as things adjust and modify through.
So, 60% of an acre.
Yeah. So, there's some changes from when Soundwoods was designed and developed to now, so, and we're basically dealing with those changes of the UDO and those things.
All right. Mr. Morrison, we'll let you finish, then we'll ask any other questions after you complete your presentation.
That's all I have to diswitness. If there are any other questions, if them are to the board or to the public.
Does anyone have any other questions, Mr. Miller or Mr. Morrison?
No, I have one for Mr. Bissell.
Okay. We're going to have some for Mr. Bissell, maybe?
Yes, he's next.
Okay.
If I were just one comment.
I'd give you one to make a closing copy.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Jarvis, just to be clear, I would not oppose what you had suggested. I just asked a question about it. I think it's good when we have collaboration, we have discussion about topics. I think it causes us to think about things and come to something that's meaningful and beneficial for everyone.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bissell?
Good evening.
Good evening. Give us your name, please.
Mark Bissell.
And, Mr. Bissell, what is your employment?
I am a professional engineer overseeing this project.
How were you able to accomplish that when you went to a trade school in Durham?
Smoking like a true Carolina graduate.
You are, you are graduate of Duke University, is that correct?
That is correct.
I keep that in mind. All right. Now, Mr. Bissell, you were the engineer in charge of this plan, correct?
That is correct.
All right. And you have testified as an engineer on development multiple times in court and in front of boards, judicial boards such as this. Is that correct?
Yes, I have.
All right. And you are qualified as an expert in that regard.
I have here in front of this board many times.
All right. Now, I want to turn it over to you. Give us the Cliff's Notes version of what Mr. Miller is proposing to do.
Let me see if I can back up to use some of the planning slides. So, we've got a 17-and-a-half acre tract. What this was, was actually a 27-and-a-half acre tract. He has recently created a 10-acre parcel to go with the existing house, which is just off the screen here to the right. And on the residual 17-and-a-half acres, we're proposing 15 single-family lots. We're proposing a roadway that connects to Sanderson Road here, runs through, and then connects to Tolls Creek Road here. Further answer to the question about site distance, there is also a 10-foot multi-use path that's being proposed here, just outside the right-of-way. So, actually, the planter will start beyond that multi-use path, so it'll be a little bit farther back. So, there'll actually be a site distance all the way along that. We have set the first lot back a substantial distance from the right-of-way, a couple hundred feet. Creates a nice buffer here. It also creates a nice place to do stormwater management, which will also double as an entrance feature through the subdivision, flanking the entrance road here. This is being designed, of course, in accordance with the county's stormwater manual and the We will be modeling the 100-year storm event in connection with that as a final design. It's also being designed to provide good fire protection. We will be connecting to water line, an existing water line here on Tolls Creek Road, looping it through the system, and tying to an existing water line on Sanderson. Of course, we will comply with sedimentation and erosion control requirements. Land on all sides is developed as residential, so it's certainly compatible with existing development and neighborhoods and development styles. As Ms. Turner indicated, the property is, is a G2, which would allow one unit per acre in SFM, two, up to two units per acre in the land use plan. We're proposing 8,600ths of an acre, so we're, we're below the allowed density. We have, as she mentioned, we are proposing to reforest these areas that are hatched. We are providing a 50-foot buffer, as well as landscaping, to create a buffer to existing And of course, a visual buffer here along, along Tolls Creek Road, all those setbacks as to not interfere with site distance. We have pointed out some areas from, that is consistent with Imagine Currituck, encouraging development to occur at densities appropriate for their location, which is land use goal number one. A land use policy, too, considering. A land use policy, two, considering community character and established visions for the community, I believe we're consistent with that. Parks and Recreation Policy, two, increasing pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. We are providing sidewalks on both sides of the road, as well as this ten-foot multi-use path that will be part of the Connect Currituck program. The staff has pointed out a number of other consistencies in your packet, and I think, I'll be glad to answer any questions. I think we meet all of the criteria for the issuance of a special use permit. Mr. Tate will be testifying as to the impact on values and...
Can I ask a question?
All right, I think Commissioner Jarvis has a question, and I have a question as well.
Looking at the stormwater report, it says that there is a swell along Sanderson Road. Let's see, there's an existing swell along Sanderson Road that drains a small portion of the site to the Currituck Sound.
Here.
Is that the only outflow? Is everything else draining to the ponds?
Everything else drains to the ponds, that's correct. If you look...
And is there any downstream analysis or analysis of that swell to make sure it will take the flow from these new lots, because they do back up to several homes behind that?
You're talking about the analysis for...
The swell.
For this little bit of swell here?
That goes to Currituck Sound.
Yeah, there's such a small amount of flow going in that direction that it's almost insignificant to that swell, but there will be an analysis done.
Okay.
That it? You mentioned this multi-use path. Is that something that y'all are proposing or required by the UDO?
It's actually required by the UDO.
Yeah, so does the county have a plan for connecting these sidewalks at some point? Or are we just going to have sidewalks here, there, and everywhere that don't connect to anything? I guess that's something for us to discuss in a future meeting, but I'm just trying to understand, is there a sidewalk at the previous subdivision that it's connecting to?
No, that requirement didn't exist at the time that that subdivision was developed.
So, this is no...
So, how long will that pedestrian path be?
So, this path will be, this segment of it will be about six hundred feet long, I believe, maybe six fifty.
Okay. That's all for me. Anyone else?
You mentioned the water line through the development. What's the diameter of that water line going to be?
Eight inches.
Good deal.
And will the ponds be fenced?
Probably not fenced, but they'll, what we generally do is have a six-to-one gentle slope from the surface till you get a couple feet below the normal water level.
So, there's no fencing or anything for the houses that are right there around the pond?
We don't normally do that, no.
Okay.
But that gentle slope keeps somebody from tumbling into a pond.
Okay.
All right.
That's a little odd, since we have rules for barriers with swimming pools, but we don't have anything for ponds.
Jenny, I'm... No, we don't, and, I mean, we don't have anything for natural features either, that water features.
You don't fence off Currituck Sound?
No. But this is man-made, this is something new we're creating.
I don't think in the past we've ever, my time on the board, it's ever been brought up about a fence around the pond because of the six-to-one slope, it's so gentle that you would have to deliberately try to get out to the middle of the pond. You wouldn't just fall in, and then it would be just very shallow at the edge of the pond.
The reason I ask is the, it looks like there is a barrier around it on your graphic this up.
It's just the outline of it.
But I guess it's just the outline of the pond.
Are you talking about this?
Yeah, it just looked like a fence.
You're just looking at, no, that's just a symbol for the normal water level.
Okay, all right.
We do have fences around all of the stormwater ponds at the schools.
That is true, but aesthetically, you're not moving people into eight-hundred-thousand-dollar houses at the school. You've got a bunch of children concentrated there versus just, I mean, it's a fine question, I just...
They may not have that gentle slope, you know, the state only requires a three-to-one slope, but a three-to-one slope is not that easy to climb out of if you happen to tumble down it.
Okay. So, you said it's a six-to-one slope?
Other person, what's that?
A six-to-one slope?
We'd double that and make it a six-to-one.
Santa Claus.
All right, anyone else? Next.
Come, you're taking me away.
Yeah. He's coming to find us tonight, it's Santa.
All right, so give the board your name, please.
Kim Tate.
Mr. Tate, where do you live, sir?
Ten ninety-three Waterly Road, Quonjock, North Carolina.
How long have you lived in Currituck County?
About thirty years.
Would you give us your educational background, please?
Have a degree in urban planning and management from Virginia Tech, and have been a professional real estate appraiser for about forty-two years.
And in the course of that forty-two years as an appraiser, have you done appraisals on subdivisions and their impacts on adjacent lands?
I have.
Ballpark figure, how many times?
Thirty.
Okay. And have you testified before this board before?
A number of times.
And have you qualified as an expert to render an opinion?
Yes.
And you're licensed in the state of North Carolina?
Yes, sir.
Are you licensed elsewhere?
State of Virginia.
And how long have you held those licenses?
Since licensing went into effect in the early nineties.
And you're in good standing?
Yes, sir.
Are you familiar with the subdivision we're talking about tonight?
Sunrise on the sound, yes.
Okay. And how is it you became familiar with it?
I was approached by Mr. Miller to prepare an impact study based on a development going into that area. Was provided the proposed plan by Mr. Bissell, and took a look at it and reviewed it that way, that's all.
All right, did you study the proposal carefully?
I did.
Are you familiar with the defined development order in Currituck County?
I am.
And can you tell us if you made an appraisal of the potential impact of this development on adjacent lands?
I did a consulting assignment based on the impact of it, to determine any value impacted to have.
And what goes into that determination?
Reviewing, reviewing the development itself to see exactly what it's going to be, and then looking out within the general market to find other subdivisions that were adjacent to new developments being built, to study the impact of that on their value over the years.
Comparable subdivision?
Comparable subdivision.
Is comparable appraisal accepted as a standard approved in your profession?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, would you tell the board your opinion as to whether or not this would have an adverse impact on adjacent property ownership?
My opinion is that it would not.
And what is that based on?
I utilized match pair analysis...
Explain that, what is that?
Or paired data analysis, which measures the impact of development of the subject property based on competitive properties. Basically, isolating one item about that property is different from other properties. And I would liken it to, you're looking at two cars that you're interested in buying, one has air conditioning, one does not. You look at different sales of cars that had air conditioning and did not, to determine the impact of that air conditioning being there or not being there. In this case, we looked at subdivision sales that had occurred at the time that there was subdivisions either proposed adjacent to them, and the process of being developed adjacent to it, or under construction adjacent to it, and looked at sales that occurred during that, and as it went through its history of that, and then compared it to the overall market trends of the whole general Currituck County, to determine if there was any valuation difference in appreciation between comparables that were developed adjacent to developing subdivisions and comparables that were not. And by doing this, we analyzed twelve different sales, looked at stuff that sold and resold during the timeframe, it was adjacent to similar developments, and then looked at the overall values of the market at time, to determine if there was any impact from development. And our analysis determined that there was no impact from adjacent development. Neighborhoods that were studied were stuff up and down Tolls Creek Road, stuff that was adjacent to, homes that had sold adjacent to Waterly, homes that sold adjacent to Fost, Fost Estates, subdivisions that were along some of the smaller subdivisions along Tolls Creek Road, muddy acres, velvet acres, some of the ones that have been around for a while. And we looked at sales adjacent to those during the timeframe that they were being developed, to determine that there was no impact on value.
We would tender, Mr. Tate, to questions from the board or the public.
Any questions of Mr. Tate?
No, Mr. Chairman, but I did want to ask the developer one thing, I just thought about, when I was sitting here looking at this, I guess when they do their con...
I'll be pleased to have the developer back.
Anyone for Mr. Tate?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Tate.
Thank you.
Miller?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Miller, I know how this road cuts through and goes, loops around, and you can actually join Sanderson. There's no entrance, and I'm just looking at this one screen, I don't know if it's up there on y'all's or not, but Baxter Estates Road does not intersect into either one of these, correct? That's correct. I just wanted to make sure. And there's no plan for that, correct? There's no possibility to even do that. It's very visually inapparent, but there is actually a spike strip that runs on the north section of that page, and I'll illustrate, if y'all can see here. From right about here to here, to here is actually the property lines. This portion of property here, and it is continuous all the way down, is actually part of the parcel that's on this side. When they did the roadway, it was a little crooked, and it left a little strip. So, we do not own that with any of our entities, and we can't cross it, it's not ours.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Miller? All right. That will be the showing for that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone else have any questions of any of the experts the applicants brought? All right, hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. For the public, I have no one signed up. Is there anyone that missed signing up that wishes to speak? You're going to have, you need to come forward and be sworn in. You need, where's a Bible, need to place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, could you give us your name and address?
Deanna Day.
Deanna Day?
Day. One thirteen Sanderson Court, Moak.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, honestly, the initial reason why I was coming to speak was to talk about the possibility of the road going out to Baxter instead of to Sanderson, being it's a road that's unpopulated by houses and children and people, as opposed to Sanderson that already has a developed area of houses where people are. But I understand now from the past conversation that that's not a possibility. So, the only thing I would ask, if it was possible for safety purposes, since it is going to run through the neighborhood where the houses are already developed, is what you addressed earlier in the sidewalks and the non-connections, it might create a better safety issue if the sidewalk runs down to complete with what is already started in Soundwoods, which is not a real long distance, but it stops at one point, and there's my house, that continues on, and I'm right next to where the road will go around. So, if we could continue that sidewalk that's going to come down to Sanderson and complete it, that would give a complete sidewalk area for everyone to walk that, with that extra traffic coming through, would be my suggestion or ask.
Can they, I'm going to have to ask the developer, can they point out where she's
talking about?
Ask the applicant to come and show us.
Mr. Bissell, first.
Is there only one?
There's one now only, there'd be two.
Help us understand we're not...
I know where I'm at, right?
I did have some trouble understanding where the sidewalk...
So, what I'm saying is, so coming down here, so that sidewalk stops, this is me, right?
Oh.
Yeah, so the sidewalk stops here, and then this is where your sidewalk is going to go to here, which leaves all this open area of walking on the roadway.
I don't see where she's talking.
Not a sidewalk. So, I'm just asking, since it has to come through there, and the traffic is going to be heavy, because I saw also that there's, the mailboxes are over here, so most of them are going to come through, obviously, often for their mailboxes as well this way. So, if we just continue the sidewalk here for...
And I don't mean to interrupt, but the board cannot see what you're pointing at or talking about.
Maybe once she shows us, we'll be glad.
Yeah, I can show it.
That'll work.
Yeah, so this here is our house here. The house here is where the sidewalk ends, right here. So, from us at this point to the roadway starting, there's no sidewalk there. So, I'm just addressing for safety purposes, since the road has to come through this way, that would leave a safe area to continue walking on the sidewalk up to that road point where the traffic will be coming through.
Hmm.
It's not a large area, but it would create a much safer area for the already established houses to walk from that point to here. That's all I'm asking. I was obviously asking to take the road to Baxter, since there was no houses there, but...
Now, we are proposing a pedestrian crossing here in the sidewalk, connection to the sidewalk on this side of the street.
Sure. But that still leaves this roadway open, where the traffic is going to be coming up and turning onto that street. If we continue the sidewalk, that creates a safety, much safer.
I thank the witness for testimony, but this is a quasi-judicial hearing, she's not qualified as a traffic engineer, and I would ask the board not to consider any of her testimony as to traffic flow.
And I would agree with Mr. Morrison on that.
All right. Heard from the attorneys, but Mr. Miller and the applicant can address whether it's something they would like to do or not.
Well, there's a couple things we need to talk about, I guess. One, I got to talk with Mark to make sure, do we have any technical issues first of all?
Sure.
I don't know what I don't know yet.
Sure, absolutely.
So, I need a couple minutes with Mr. Bissell to talk about that. The second thing, then, is with that, am I safe to assume that you're willing to provide a easement for that as well? Because that would be on your property.
I don't know what that entails, but...
Well, we'd have to have an easement to actually put that on your property. I can't put that on your property, you know, and make that happen that way. If you look here, these sidewalks actually lay on the property of this lot, on the lot of this lot. So, it wouldn't lay out here, it would lay on your property.
That would be fine, for the safety purposes.
Which means it would have land impact, we'd soil impact, all that kind of stuff as well.
I would be okay with that for the safety purposes.
You know, for those types of things.
I mean, I don't have children or anything, but there are a lot of children in our neighborhood, so I just think for, in general...
I will say, piggybacking on what Mr. Morrison has said, and our attorney has said, that is not part of the proposal tonight.
No, I'm just asking.
Yeah, and we can't take the safety portion, because we're sitting as like a judge and a jury up here, so we can only address the evidence that is presented to us, and there is no traffic safety evidence presented to us tonight. That's why he said we can't use that as part of our decision.
Gotcha, okay. And maybe we could just discuss this outside of here, maybe? That would be great.
That is correct.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, we, we...
Can you answer the question better?
If I could have y'all's attention for another second here, first of all, we can't make that a part of a requirement, because he does not have the easements or the ownership of the property to do it. If it's something that y'all can work out afterwards, if it passes, then that'll be fine, but it cannot be considered as part of what's been presented to us tonight.
We can do that. Appreciate you listening.
All right, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. That is the only person I have signed up tonight. That is the only person I have signed up tonight. Close the public hearing. And public comments, I'll close the public comments. Now, the applicant, if you have anything further you'd like to say?
We do not, sir.
We do not. All right. So now I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for their decision.
The person who just spoke, the person who just spoke brought up a good point about the location of the mailboxes. So I wonder if it would be possible to put the mailboxes at the other end of the road that goes through the new neighborhood.
Something the applicant can address?
You would have to reopen, you would have to reopen the public hearing.
Yeah. So if the applicant would like to address it, I'll reopen the public hearing.
Can we have just a moment, sir?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Turner, can you point where the mailboxes for this are located? I guess, I'm assuming it's the-
It's right here where the hand is, right here.
I don't see a hand. Oh, wait, on my computer.
The mail, so the mailboxes for, isn't there mailboxes, the mailboxes for Sunrise are there too right now, correct?
They're across the street, I believe.
They're a little further back.
That's not on twice.
They're maybe down here.
No.
Maybe down here.
That's back their bus.
I thought they had their own mailboxes. Did they have their own?
No, they have a-
So where, where are they proposing the mailboxes?
Here.
In the new, in the old neighborhood where it intersects with the old one.
The other ones are-
Right. So this is where Sanderson meets Reedley Lane.
Yeah. So is, is there a commonality here with the, the mailboxes for the adjacent subdivision mailbox? Do they have a main mailbox section right there, or?
They have a, they have a section, I believe it's across Sanderson, and, and maybe a little bit to the west.
Okay.
It's probably less than a football field, I think, away.
Okay.
Yeah. I believe the UDO requires the cluster mailboxes now, and you can't have individual mailboxes in a subdivision, correct?
The post office requires it.
Post office.
Yeah, let's see here. Oh, I was wrong. It's, it's almost right exactly across the street, right here.
Yeah, they're close.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your concern, Commissioner. That puts us in a difficult situation. The Postal Service, the TRC approved the location, is where it is now. We do not know that they would approve or disapprove a relocation. So we simply cannot address that question and it wasn't raised earlier.
Since the public hearing's reopened, any other questions?
There is another one.
Okay, you need to come and be sworn as well. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
All right. And give us your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Phyllis Webb at 165 Baxter Estates Road.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is fire hydrants. Is there any?
With the hooking up of county water, I'm pretty sure there's fire hydrants. I'm just not sure where they are.
I didn't, I looked at drawing earlier at home, but I didn't see none. So, and the reason I'm asking is because we have none in our neighborhood. And we had a fire in there about five or six years ago, and the fire department ran out of water. And then they tried to come to the sound, to the boat ramp-
Draft water.
And draw the water.
Yeah.
And they couldn't draw the water. So, and then they end up going across the street to the point there at Wedgewood Lakes and running back and forth.
Let me ask, Ms. Turner, does, does that get addressed during the installation of water lines, or is that something that's already been addressed?
It's shown on the preliminary plot, I believe. The location of fire hydrants.
Yes. Can you show that for us?
I hope so.
You got it. How many you got?
We have one new one. It's right here, actually. No, it's right here, actually. But I mean, it's not in that.
And I'm on here.
Yeah, that's it, right there. You have one new. It says proposed hydrant, actually.
H14 of the-
I see, yeah.
Line that comes into review.
Between 11 and 12.
And here, there's a hydrant here. So we put them within every 500 feet. The reason there's no hydrant on this over here-
Yeah.
This has a two-inch water line. This was designed years ago.
That's what I'm wondering, because I-
It can't support a hydrant because it only has a two-inch, so.
And that's the problem. That's, that's, that's the concern that I have is, since we've been there for so long, we've been here for 40 years, and we've never been, you know, able to put one in. So how do we go about?
You're not going to be able to. The issue with that, that subdivision-
That's another, another-
When it was created, it has, and I have knowledge about this as well, it has a two-inch water line.
So that's what it is.
And that runs all the way down Baxter Estates Road. And because of that, you can't support a hydrant on that.
So it would require the replacement of the water lines, which would be a separate issue from what we're discussing tonight.
Okay.
But we certainly can-
But it's a possibility.
We certainly can have that discussion.
Okay.
I don't know that I can tell you it'll happen, but we certainly can discuss it as, as we plan.
So we have to reach out to, to-
Ms. Rebecca Gay.
Okay.
So as, as we expand water lines and do different things and infrastructure, that's something that could be addressed at some future time.
Okay.
All right?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have no one else, and I am closing the public hearing again, and we're gonna ask the board for a motion.
Excuse me, Mr. or Commissioner O'Neil, before you close that.
Already closed it. What do you have?
Well, we talked about the mailbox piece and if we could even move the mailbox. And the only thing that I could see we could actually possibly do-
Hold, hold on. We got the, this is a quasi judicial, we can't take any more testimony unless I open the public hearing again. Does the board want me to open the public hearing again?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is open for the third time.
All right. I'm trying to go to where we're at. Currently, it's down here. We have to provide a parking space for that. Mr. Bissell and myself do not feel, in our opinion, that it's something we'd want to put at the entrance. One, it's right there off Tulsa Creek Road, which we have rules about driveway entrances and different distances, and we've just reduced speed limits and other things. So putting that there and risking some people stacking up in the evening, not the best idea. We could potentially look at moving it somewhere else, but I can't guarantee that we can do that. It's something that's out of our control. If it's something you'd like us to look into, because you feel strongly about it, Commissioner Rose, we could look into it, but that's the biggest commitment that we could make with it tonight, because it's not a decision that we have the ability to make. We could propose it, and if the post office said, fine, great. If they said, sorry, well, then it's going to have to go where it's got to go.
Fair enough. All right. I am closing the public hearing for the last time. We can, uh, need a motion from the board. We need a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to approve 24-25 Sunrise on the Sound subdivision, preliminary plat, special use permit, because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the review standards of the UDO. The, I want to include all the information from the staff report that Ms. Turner presented with all the land use policies that she cited. One, that the use will not endanger public health or safety, as demonstrated by the expert testimony presented. Number two, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, as demonstrated by the expert testimony presented. The use will be in conformity with the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan or other officially adopted plans. Staff showed us that, and the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public school facilities. There was some question about timing. We are supposed to be in the Tulsa Creek Elementary School in October of next year. Mr. Miller stated it would be 18 months from the day, which will put it June before he would get the first CO. So I think there's adequate timing in there.
If I may ask, was that June of '26 he's referring to?
'26, yes, 18 months. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion. Do we have a proper second?
A second.
Have a proper second with the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to new business. Number one is board appointments, affirm appointments for commissioner service on advisory boards and committees. Turn that over to Ms. Jarvis.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that the appointments to the advisory boards, as found on page 50 of the consent agenda and discussed at our work session last meeting, be approved. I would also ask that, along with Mr. Payments' appointment to the ABC Board, the Alcohol Beverage Control Board, that he also be named as chairman of that board moving forward from today.
All right. We have a motion for appointments. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 1A is a resolution concerning the Corey Ditch Bridge Replacement. I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Angel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So after attending the meeting on Monday and diving into the, the data that was provided by NC DOT, talking with fellow commissioners, we have, we have a draft resolution requesting further study of the impacts of NC 615 Bridge Replacement Alternative 2. Whereas the Department of North Carolina Transportation replaced the bridge on NC 615 over Corey's Ditch near Knott's Island in 2007, and whereas the North Carolina Department of Transportation identified damage to the bridge requiring interim repair in 2021 and long-term solution for replacement. And whereas the North Carolina Department of Transportation proposed two alternatives for replacement of the existing 180-foot bridge, replacing kind or closure of the man-made canal and paving of a new roadway. And whereas the North Carolina Department of Transportation held an open house public meeting on December 9th, 2024, to present project information and to obtain public feedback. And whereas the Currituck County Board of Commissioners has received feedback from residents and property owners expressing concern about the impact of the closure of Corey's Ditch. And whereas the Currituck County Board of Commissioners is concerned that the data resulting from the hydrodynamic modeling is incomplete, and that the public has not been provided sufficient information about the project. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Currituck, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners is not able to support proposed Alternative 2 to close Corey's Ditch at this time and request the following of the Department, North Carolina Department of Transportation prior to selection of Alternatives 1 or 2. Further modeling analysts or analysis of the impact of wind tides over a seven-day duration from the southwest, northeast, southeast direction, and inclusion of additional data points along the sound side of Corova Beach in the modeling analysis, and consideration of the impacts of the city of Virginia Beach Marsh Restoration Project located within the Back Bay National Wildlife Refuge in the modeling analysis, and a formal project presentation, including an opportunity for question and answers.
All right. We have a resolution.
I'll second, I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. I'm gonna open it for discussion. I would like to say that I was supposed to go to the open house at Knott's Island, but I had a family medical emergency and could not make it. I called Mr. Angel, and he let some people know. Just want the folks at Knott's Island to know that I am in support of what we're doing here, but I could not make the meeting that night. So I just wanted to disclose that. Also, would like to say that Corey's Ditch has been there since 19-
27.
27, so essentially 100 years. Whatever environmental impacts there are, are established, it's over. They need to understand that this ditch has a lot to do with drainage, and closing this ditch is going to have some severe impacts on Knott's Island, but not just Knott's Island. It's going to cause water to dam up in the northern Currituck, Moya, the Outer Banks. And without that flow of water going through there, it's going to create a lot of problems beyond what they're looking to do. So those are my comments, and I'll be glad to anyone else.
I'll just say that, first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Angel for his work on this and his questions at the meeting. I, we also heard from the city of Chesapeake, who was at that meeting, and they also have serious concerns. And I don't know that the concerns, that any of the concerns that were raised there were adequately addressed. So I think this should go a long way in getting some more modeling and some more questions answered. So thank you, Commissioner Angel.
Good work, Commissioner Angel.
I attended the meeting with the citizens, and they were very upset with the format of the meeting. It was not acceptable. There was a large crowd there. So I think this resolution is very important, and I think, you know, it's, it's got the possibility, if they close the ditch, it's, it could do more than cause harm to Knott's Island. Just as Chesapeake is concerned, Air Mainland needs to be concerned as well.
Correct. Absolutely. Anyone else?
Keep in mind, until this board surfaced this, DAT was keeping this quiet.
Yeah.
Yes.
They were not going to have any type of public meetings. And we insisted that they do have a public meeting. And I would go so far as to say, we'd be prepared if we cannot get them to agree to seek litigation to get it approved, so we can take care of this, because we're talking about changing the ecology of an entire region.
Well, another comment, they talk about it's not a natural-
Waterway.
-waterway or whatever, but if we're going to be purist, the sand dunes on the beach aren't natural either. They were all man-made, and they've been accepted for about less than 100 years as being something we want to protect because of life and, and property. So I would say it's no different than with this Corey's Ditch. It's about humans and, and property, and we certainly need to get behind that. So any other comments?
It is very concerning how secretive this was kept.
Yeah.
And by chance, it was brought up at the store. Otherwise, the commissioners wouldn't have known about it either.
That's right.
So a citizen reached out with FOIA requests that she had been collecting for over six months, and I've got emails from DOT to Fish and Wildlife from 2022. So this, this has been a long-term project that they are both working toward with the bridge replacement. I don't know who approached who first, but yeah, it's, it's very, it's very closed off from the public.
And their concern in the, the DOT people I talked with that night was, well, if we put the bridge up, it's not going to last long. We'll have to do another one. You know, it was, you know, money was the concern.
They could put one over Oregon inlet.
Yeah.
Of course, it shouldn't be that big of a problem. So I will say with, with the new design of the bridge, so the current bridge was never meant to be expanded. The new design of the bridge will be a complete replacement, from my understanding, but the bridge heads will serve as interior girder supports if the need does arise to expand the bridge in the future. So it will not be a full replacement in the future. So the, it would, the cost would not be as, as much as they are right now. It would just be an expansion to the current bridge.
And they constantly have to spend money to, uh, keep hatteras afloat.
Well, that's, that's the other concern is, you know, the, with the bridge or with the ditch allowing water to traverse through there, um, if we get a big nor'easter, is it, is it going to erode the road itself? And then we're going to have to worry about repaving it and this, that, and the other.
Yeah. I also remember when this bridge was being proposed, it was proposed that this would last for fifty years or more.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five years, and, uh, they didn't do a very good job.
Some engineer was asleep at the switch.
Yeah. So without any other comments, I'll ask the board for all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will now move on to the commissioner's report. We'll start with you, Ms.
Consent agenda, move for approval.
Dang, gone.
Second.
Consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any further consideration? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I was trying to rush through this thing tonight. Uh, now we'll move to commissioner's report. We'll start with Mr. Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Short. Uh, this is the Christmas season, but we've seen a lot of tragedy in the last week. The school shooting today in Wisconsin, last week seeing the CEO of the insurance company. People take a deep breath. It's Christmas. It's the birth of the Christ child, and we should be honoring that birth by being good civil people to each other. Merry Christmas, everyone. See you next year.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCord?
I'm going to be brief. Uh, the Christmas parade was a huge success. I just want to thank a bunch of people that assisted myself and the Currituck F O P Lodge eighty-nine. Um, Cameron Lowe and her staff are amazing from the Cooperative Extension Office. This event could not be put on without F O P and the extension. Um, we need each other. Um, some of her main people I want to point out who helped me the most with setup, breaking down, all that stuff. Um, Sheila Gregory's done the, um, Christmas parade for probably close to two decades. She's huge, um, great employee. She's soon to retire. When she retires, I'm going to retire from the Christmas parade too because I need Sheila. Ella Skinner has helped the last few years. She's awesome. Uh, Chris Blaha has helped, um, the last couple of years as well. Um, some of our local, local residence businesses was a huge sponsor. Regent Rents, uh, the Jennings family, they live in Currituck on the Sound. We paid for four. He gave us four. Um, so that's a huge savings to, for safety and everything for everybody out there for the citizens. Um, Parks and Rec, uh, this year I did a trade. Instead of me having to take all the trailer or the, uh, light trailers, towers back to Virginia or Sean's house in Currituck on the Sound, uh, I decided I would clean up the trash. And Jason Weeks from Parks and Rec, which, um, I still think cleaning up the trash was better because that was a lot of rides back and forth to Chesapeake. Um, William Nelson, our airport director, awesome. His staff, they were so helpful. It was so lit up. It was so well organized. Cameron said this was the best one by far that we'd ever had. I agree with her for the most part. Santa, the fire engine at Crawford that had Santa on it all lit up, blowout tire. So Santa was in a golf cart, but we improvised. Uh, it was super cold, coldest Christmas parade, uh, for the last 10 years I've been working with it, uh, can remember. But the, uh, we had some awesome floats, and we have a great community. It was a really, really great event, and I could not believe we had probably close to 1,300 people in attendance. Last year was close to 2,000 because it was cold. It was so cold. Um, long day, but, uh, good job by all. Huge success thanks to the county, the Christmas trees, the Christmas tree for the county, the tree lighting that Cameron and them do was beautiful. Moayok Farms gives the county a great deal on the tree. Um, I think it was half of the one price of the one that we had bought a few years ago. So we're saving that tax dollar. Um, like I said, I'm just, like I said, super thanks. I hope Sheila's not done because, uh, Sheila Gregory is a huge asset to the Christmas parade for helping me email everybody. So, and Merry Christmas to everybody. Um, and that's it. Everybody will see you in 2025.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. Mr. Angel?
So, uh, two things tonight. Uh, thank you to staff for quick turnaround. Um, I know a lot of people say government's not meant to move, you know, fast, uh, but I, I do appreciate the assistance on the, uh, the resolution, uh, getting that done and, and prepared for tonight. Uh, the second thing, uh, Currituck County High School wrestling home opener this Wednesday at five o'clock. Uh, Oscar Smith and, um, Hickory is, are coming down. So if, uh, if you don't have anything to do Wednesday night, come support the high school. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Commissioner Angel. Ms. Rose?
Well, I attended that great parade. Hats off to you, Kevin, and all the folks that worked hard to do it. I, I also attended a Christmas party with the Crawford Fire Department, and it was very nice. And I want to thank all of their volunteer fire departments for the service that they provide for our county. They are invaluable. And I think at some point, we really need to sit down. I need to become more aware of how that all works, the gears and what have you with the fire department, the E M T, and I'd love for us to discuss that further. Um, also, let's see, it seems like there was one more thing. Santa, oh, what Crawford and Lower Currituck and Moayok's doing and taking Santa throughout the county. I, I hear nothing but positive comments about that. So that's another great thing that they do in addition to putting out fires. And Tony mentioned the wrestling. I want to mention, most of their elementary schools have a Christmas sing-along. And if you need to get in the Christmas spirit, go to one of the elementary schools, participate in the sing-along, go to the high school, the middle school. They've got band concerts and the music. It's something about the music at Christmas time. And I'd like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Ms. Jarvis?
Thank you. Um, on Wednesday, I had the opportunity to relive my teaching days. I attended, uh, and presented at the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce Leadership O B X Program. Um, back in 2019, I, I first attended this and presented with our former county manager, Ike McCree. And it was from this presentation that he and I did, uh, that we began to rehash the idea of a citizens academy. Uh, it was ideas that people had had before, but, uh, he made that program come to fruition, and I am eternally grateful for, for him, uh, for getting that up and running. I'm very proud of the citizens academy, and it was my honor to present down at the Manio Courthouse. Uh, I presented jointly with Chairman Woodard, and he and I, uh, discussed, uh, the optimistic, uh, opportunities that will be uh, in front of us, uh, with our new chairman, uh, to meet and collaborate with our coastal partner, uh, on, uh, just a ton of different issues. So it was my joy to be able to present that, uh, to a room full of people who just wanted to learn about government. I would have killed to have that kind of, uh, interest when I taught. Everybody in the room was engaged. Uh, and then, um, I do want to shout out the Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department. They came by last night. I had people two weeks ago reach out to me and say, when are they coming by the house with Santa? Uh, I said, just join their, like their Facebook page. They're going to be putting that out. Well, as soon as I saw it, I called several people, and it is a joyful time. Um, it's, it's always funny when I get calls because people don't know what that is, and they think there's some kind of emergency. Uh, and I, as I pointed out last night, they generally don't drive up and down a road looking for someone. It's just the Christmas spirit. Um, and then I do want to say Merry Christmas to everybody. Um, it is a joyful season, but it is not always the happiest time of year for everyone. And I would ask that you check on your elderly neighbors, uh, your people who've lost loved ones in the last year, uh, people that are lonely. Reach out to them, spread that Christmas cheer, and even if it's just for yourself to, to feel the Christmas spirit, reach out to those people because it's a tough time for a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. Um, I have two quick things. The first thing is, um, I shared a, a white paper that I, uh, downloaded with the, uh, manager concerning some OSHA rules that are, uh, proposed to go into effect that are going to adversely affect volunteer fire departments. It's going to have a lot to do with their equipment, uh, their training, and, and a lot of things that are going to adversely affect them and their abilities to continue and to recruit. So I'm going to ask, uh, the manager to send that out to you this week, and then we need to prepare a resolution in opposition to these rule changes to send to our elected officials in Washington, D C. And then the next thing I want to, uh, uh, make the public aware of is House Bill three eighty-two, the governor vetoed, but it was overridden and is now law. And there's a lot of provisions in there that had nothing to do with the hurricane recovery efforts, but one of the provisions they put in there takes away all authority from, um, commissioners and municipalities to downzone, reduce density in any way on any properties without the consent of the property owners. Now, as a, uh, person who believes in, in property rights, uh, I understand some of what they're talking about. But I also want everybody to understand that as you're standing here asking the board to do certain things, a lot of that authority is taken away from us at different times. Uh, with us being a Dillon Rule state, we only have the authority that's delegated to us from the General Assembly, and they're very selfish and very tight with their authority. They won't allow us to do impact fees. There are so many things they won't allow us to do that the general public wants us to do and wants to know why we're not doing them, but we don't have the authority. So those are two things that we need on the radar, and we need to, uh, at our next meeting, come out with a resolution, a letter to our representatives to overturn that rule. Um, Senator Hennig has told me he believes that there is a move to overturn that, but we definitely need to make sure that we support his efforts and the other efforts of those that are trying to get it overturned. So I would ask that our next agenda, we also have a resolution in opposition to, uh, the provisions of, uh, that bill as well.
Can you elaborate a little bit on exactly what that's going to mean to property owners?
You can't, you can't downzone. I mean, for a property owner, if you're zoned where you can put 80 units on an acre, you can put 80 units on an acre. But what it really means is in the event of a catastrophe or storm or whatever, if a county needs to make some provisions to change some of their land use plans because of now, you know, you have, uh, different uses for the property after a storm or whatever.
River, and it's not
Correct.
land anymore.
Yeah. So you cannot change any of the, the zoning ordinances without the property owner's consent. So hopefully we'll have a better read on that. Uh, maybe our attorney will be able to better, uh, detail what it all entails. It gives her time to study up on it for the next meeting.
I think it wasn't just property owners. It was adjacent and abutting properties as well, wasn't it?
No, it's just property.
No, just the property owners?
Property.
I believe it's just the property owners. That would be affected by the...
Another example of how, and Paul and I can speak to this over our tenure, they've just chipped away the little things, full power of height from the counties and put it in the hands of the state. And if you read, uh, there was an article, uh, I think it was in W R A L, and the president of the Home Builders Association was praising the bill. He said, "Just another example of protecting property rights."
Well.
It's similar to like, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It's similar to like Senate Bill three hundred where they took a ton of, and limitations on different stuff, on county ordinances and all kinds of stuff. So it's, this is like an even further, deeper reach of it.
Yeah. Commissioner Etheridge and myself were a part of previous boards where on several occasions, we tried to get a local bill passed to allow Currituck County to impose impact fees. And we even had the builder said, hey, we would be glad to pay the impact fees. We have no problem with it, but we can't legally accept the funds from anybody as an impact fee, and we can't legally charge an impact fee. So therefore, when somebody comes in and they do a subdivision, it's all on the property owners, the taxpayers for whatever, uh, adverse effects it has on a community. But we asked on several occasions for a local bill to allow us to do impact fees, and we were told not just no, but heck no with an exclamation point. And our, our representative at the time said, I'm not even going to introduce it. He said, I will not even introduce that local bill for you. So there's a very big, um, uh, pushback on allowing counties and, and cities to have any authority to do anything. So. Yes, sir.
In about three weeks, we're going to lose Congressman Greg Murphy as our congressman.
Sad day.
Yeah.
And we need to send a letter of appreciation, a resolution, and have it ready at the next meeting for adoption.
That's fine as well. All right. And I also would like to, uh, wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and, and remember what Christmas is. It's not just Santa Claus and, and big meals. It's your family. It's our Lord's birth, and it's a time to just reflect and, and just be thankful. And I, I agree with what Commissioner Etheridge said. We just need to tone down the rhetoric a little bit in this country and, and remember that we all are created by the same God. So with that, but nothing else.
Oh, got the county manager report.
Dang, gone. I'm trying to get us out of here. County managers' report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to remind you all of some holiday closure information. Administrative offices will be closed next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Um, convenience centers will close at 5:00 P. M. On Tuesday, and then the transfer station and all the convenience centers will be closed all day on Wednesday.
Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
County attorney?
No report.
Okay. And just to defend myself, this thing is all marked up. So I've, I've been confused. I even marked it. I can't even read my own writing. So.
Mr. Chairman, you were not used to the second meeting in December. It's probably that, too.
That threw me off, too. So with that, uh,
Make a motion that we adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed can stay.